And good evening and welcome to the City Council Meeting of the City of Lenore for Tuesday, May the 4th, 2021. We welcome you here this evening. Glad to have you with us. As we go to our, in a few minutes, we will go to our moment of silence and our pledge of allegiance time. First, let me make a couple of announcements real quickly. I would like to say congratulations first to Joshua Harris, who is now the President of the NC-3C North Carolina City and County Communicators. I've been addressing him as Mr. President all week.
I thought that was a professional wrestling outfit at first.
It's the public information officers, marketeers, brand managers, webmasters, videographers, graphic designers dedicated to the professional development and networking of local government communication professionals. Formed in 2007, has over 200 members, and he is the president this year. Congratulations, Josh.
Yeah, congratulations.
And appreciate your service on that. Today also is Star Wars Day. May the Fourth be with you.
Joe, also, just, you know, may the Fourth be with you, but also the, I gotta, we gotta say congratulations to you for being elected to as the Vice Chair for the Mayor's, North Carolina Mayor's Association.
Thank you, thank you. Appreciate that. Very honored to serve with that group that there when we kind of formed it, so it's been fun to be a part of. Also today, it's Teacher Appreciation Day.
Birthday.
So we want to recognize all our teachers. This is, I think it's Appreciation Week, but today is Teacher Appreciation Day. We thank them for all they are doing and what they've been through over the last year. And also, a very special day, John Beal is 50 years old today.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, sir. He has, he's finally reached that old man age.
Hey now.
Congratulations, not only for teacher appreciation, but for your birthday as well.
Happy birthday.
All the way around.
That old man comment, where's that leave you?
Way off.
Thank you.
Leaves me close to Ike Perkins.
It's not my office.
And the last thing I'll announce today is opening day of minor league baseball. If you love baseball, Minor League is back. Glad to have that going on and all that good things going on. As we go now to our time of moment of silence, we would like to keep the, and say condolences to our neighbors, Watauga County Sheriff's Office for our loss of two of our inline, end of line, line of duty officer deaths that happened with Sergeant Chris Ward and K-9 Deputy Logan Fox in Watauga County. The Watauga Sheriff, of course, is our own Lynn Hegeman, who was here in Lenore as our, was our former Public Works Director of the City of Lenore for eight and a half years in our city, and has been a number of things in Watauga County, but now serves as their sheriff and has done a great job. But we're so, so sorry for that, and of course, the two, the mom and the father, stepfather, who were also killed in this terrible tragedy, and so many things, five, five people dying in that. So please keep them in your thoughts and prayers when we go to that in just a few minutes. Before we do, let's do our roll call real quick, so we'll know who all was with us tonight. We'll start with our council members. On the council, Jonathan Beal is here, Ike Perkins is here, David Stevens here, Todd Purdue is here, Ben Willis is here, Ralph Presswood is here, and myself, I am here. So that's on the council. Also in the room, our City Attorney, TJ Rohr, is with us. City Manager Scott Hildebrand is here, and our Communications Director, Joshua Harris, is here. And in the back, and we'll be recognized in a few minutes, our Fire Chief Ken Hare is with us this evening. Our Public Works Director, Jared Wright, is here, and Captain Andy Wilson of the Police Department filling in ably for Chief Phelps is here tonight, and we welcome, welcome you here as well. And also, we're glad to have Karen, who's with us from the news topic. Thank you for being with us tonight as well. Now, let's quickly do a roll call on the line. Mayor Pro Tem Chrissy Thomas.
Yes.
Thank you. And City Clerk Shirley Cannon, I think Shirley is with us. Finance Director Donna Bean.
Here.
Thank you. Economic Development Main Street Director, Kaylin Horn.
I'm here.
Thank you. Parks and Recreation Director, Anne Assistant Fire Chief Kenny Storey.
I'm here. Thanks for the promotion.
Yes, sir. Our Public Utilities Director, Radford Thomas.
I'm here.
We're glad to have you, sir. We're gonna do a proclamation with you on virtual in a few minutes. Our Planning Director, Jenny Wheelock.
I'm here.
Thank you. I think that covers everybody. If I left anybody out, please let me know, but I believe that covers everybody that is with us tonight.
I think Chief Phelps is on the call as well.
Okay, and our Police Chief, Brent Phelps, is with us as well. Thanks, Chief. Glad you're with us on the call, and I hope you're doing well. All right. Please join us now as we rise for our moment of silence, and please remain standing for our pledge of allegiance. Thank you. We salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Tonight, we've come to honor several special events. May seems to be a very special month, and tonight, we have special recognitions, and I've got to pull this down or I can't do it, with all these tonight. We will present several proclamations, and the first one tonight will be to our Public Works Director for, this is National Public Works Week throughout the City of Lenore, which is May 16th through May 22nd, and I will ask our Public Works Director, Jared Wright, to join me as we present this proclamation for National Public Works Week. Whereas, public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities, and to the public health, high quality of life and well-being of the people of the City of Lenore. And whereas, these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals, who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for all of our citizens. And whereas, it is with public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and the children in the City of Lenore to gain knowledge of, and to maintain a progressive interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas, the year 2021 marks the 61st Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association. Now, therefore, I as Mayor and on behalf of the Lenore City Council do hereby designate the week of May 16th through May 22nd, 2021, as National Public Works Week, and urge all citizens to join with, with representatives of governmental agencies and the American Public Works Association in activities and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, and administrators, and to recognize the substantial contributions they have made to our national health and welfare. Witness thereof, this the fourth day of May 2021. Jared, thank you, sir. We appreciate it. I pledge, we appreciate all that you guys do. As I say always, you guys are the backbone of what keeps our city going, sir. Is there anything you would like to say? Please do.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Hildebrand, thank you for your support of National Public Works Week and your support of our department. The theme for Public Works Week this year is stronger together, and I couldn't think of a more fitting description for how we function as a department, and really how we function as a city. We prioritize teamwork, and it requires our entire team, Lenore, to do what we do. So thank you again for your support and the participation in Public Works Week.
Thank you, Jared.
Thank you.
Do a picture.
Yes, sir.
All right. All right, everybody. See everybody?
One, two, three, smile.
He said he had his tongue out. Our next special recognition is for the City Council. This proclamation to, would be presented to Captain Andy Wilson, our Police Department, and our Acting Chief. That, but this is to, for the month of May is Motorcycle Safety and Awareness Month throughout the city. And let me read that as well. This is for Motorcycle Safety and Awareness Month, May 2021. Whereas, the growth and popularity of motorcycle riding and touring, combined with the many scenic destinations in our state, and the year-long riding season, have led to North Carolina having one of the largest populations, easy to say, of motorcycle enthusiasts in the nation. And whereas, more and more residents of the City of Lenore are taking up this mode of transportation to commute to and from their places of employment. And whereas, many motorcyclists undergo specialized training by attending professionally taught motorcycle operator training courses with emphasis on skills, traffic laws, and proper safety equipment. And whereas, it is the responsibility of all motorists to be aware of motorcyclists and extend to them the same courtesy as any other vehicles on our roadways. Now, therefore, I as Mayor and on behalf of the Lenore City Council, we hereby proclaim the month of May as Motorcycle Safety and Awareness Month throughout the City of Lenore. We witness this the fourth day of May 2021. Captain? Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. I've got another one to do. Let's do it. And then if you have some things you want to say, we'll do that after we do this one, if that's okay. And this proclamation is for, in recognition of Peace Officers Memorial Week, which is May the 9th through the 15th, 2021. And obviously, this comes at a time of a terrible tragedy that has happened here in our, in our surrounding community and that, but we want to say thank you to all our peace officers, and what they do, and what they mean to our community so much. So our prayers and thoughts will always be with you as you protect us every day. But this is in recognition of Peace Officer Memorial Week. Whereas, the Congress and the President of the United States has designated May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day, and the week in which May 15th falls as National Police Week. And whereas, the members of the law enforcement agency of the Lenore Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of those inside the City of Lenore. And whereas, it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their law enforcement agency, and that members of our law enforcement agency recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception, and the weak against oppression. And whereas, the men and women of law, of the law enforcement agency of the Lenore Police Department, unceasingly provide a vital public service. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I as Mayor and on behalf of the Lenore City Council do hereby proclaim and call upon all citizens of Lenore, and upon all patriotic civic and educational organizations to observe the week of May 9th through May 15th, 2021, as Police Week. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic virus currently gripping our nation and community, social gatherings that normally observed this memorial have been canceled. However, a request via social media for a moment of silence and a virtual candle will be posted on Wednesday, May 12th, 2021, in lieu of any formalized gatherings. Furthermore, I proclaim and call upon all citizens of the City of Lenore to recognize May 15th, 2021, as Police, as Peace Officers Memorial Day, in honor of those law enforcement officers who, through their courageous deeds, have made the ultimate sacrifice in service to their community, or have become disabled in the performance of duty. Let us recognize and pay respect to the survivors of our fallen heroes. Witness my hand and seal this the fourth day of May 2021. Captain, thank you very much. We appreciate all you do, and all the service of all our officers, not only here in Lenore, Caldwell County, but across this great state. We do appreciate it. I'll let you address the council.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Council, I appreciate the opportunity to be here. First off, Motorcycle Awareness Month. We just ask everyone, with May being that month, weather starts to warm up, and we see more two-wheeled vehicular traffic. But with that, obviously, the City of Lenore has a lot of places for those folks to visit, as does Caldwell County, and obviously, sitting here in the foothills of the Blue Ridge Mountains, all places to ride and enjoy. We just ask that the motor public look twice at intersections. Sometimes the motorcycles are a little harder to see. Slow down, pay attention to their surroundings. With Peace Officer Memorial Week, obviously, that, that hits home for us. This week, we've had two of ours in a neighboring county lose their lives. Our thoughts and prayers are with the Watauga County Sheriff's Office and the families, most importantly, of those two officers that lost their lives. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Can you get a picture if we can? And our next proclamation is in honor of Drinking Water Week, and this will be presented to our Public Utilities Director, Mr. Radford Thomas, who is on with us on virtual tonight. So we'll be making this proclamation and presenting to him virtually on that. So we appreciate it. And Radford, we do appreciate what all that your department does, and making sure that we do have great drinking water, and water, and sewer, and everything that you take care of, and all the pipework, and all the things that have to be done. We appreciate all that you guys do to keep, make our city the safest and best it can be with that. We're proud of our water, and I enjoy it every day. You know, it's a good, good thing. So let me read this, and then we'll let you make some comments virtually with us. Proclamation and celebration of Drinking Water Week. Whereas, water is our most valuable natural resource, and whereas, only tap water delivers public health protection, fire protection, support for our economy, and the quality of life we enjoy. And whereas, any measure of a successful society, low mortality rates, economic growth, and diversity, productivity, and public safety are in some way related to access to safe water. And whereas, we are all stewards of the water infrastructure upon which future generations depend. And whereas, each citizen of the City of Lenore is called upon to help protect our source waters from pollution, to practice water conservation, and to get involved in local water issues by getting to know their water. Now, therefore, be it resolved that by virtue of the authority vested in me and the City of Lenore, and on behalf of the Lenore City Council, I do hereby proclaim the week of May 2nd through May 8th, 2021, as Celebrate Drinking Water Week throughout the City of Lenore. And witness thereof, with the fourth, fix this the fourth day of May 2021. Radford, thank you very much, and we will let you make some comments virtually if you can.
Yes, first of all, I'd like to thank you and the City Council and Mr. Hildebrand for working so hard to provide us with the resources we need to do our, our work every day. Our team and our department understand very well the benefit of clean water, not in just drink, but as it gets returned back to our, our streams for other uses. It's vitally important, you know, how clean that water is when we return it back into the environment. You know, clean water, the economic benefit, the public health benefit that clean water provides to our community every day is, it's all serious business, and everyone has a stake in, in that. You know, being mindful of, you know, where, where you pour something out on the ground, pesticides, fertilizers, all those things that, that we use to make our grass green and keep the bugs out of our gardens, all those things can, I can have an impact on that, and on our, our water quality. And just getting people aware and to, and to think about that. Having visited a little island country a few years ago that did not have the benefit of clean water, and the impact that it had on, on their citizens and their little communities, became very evident to me, and, and it's, it's just something that, that we have to have, you know, we, we have to have water. It's public economic impact and, and just public health. And I, I thank you for all the support that you give us, and I thank my staff. They work hard every day. They're, they're so good at what they do, and they understand the importance of their jobs.
Thank you, sir. We certainly appreciate that. Let's do a picture. We can do a picture with a virtual picture of, of.
You need to come down here.
Hold that area.
Are you serious?
He's getting rapping wrong.
Radford, we're gonna shoot you a picture through this.
It's a mobile raptor.
Mobile raptor.
So be sure to smile.
Smile, okay.
Yes, I'll be.
Resolution.
Did you see him?
Can we hologram? I can, yeah, I can sort of do it.
All right, everybody in?
One, two. If you take a picture of a picture, if you have a picture of a picture. One, two, three. I can see him.
Yeah.
All right. Please don't tell anybody we did that.
I have to admit, I've got such a habit of attending these meetings virtually, I don't think I'd be in there.
You can ask. Okay, last but certainly not least, today, we have a special recognition. We'll recognize, of course, our Fire Chief Ken Hare is here, the Lenore Fire Department. This is proclaiming Tuesday, May 4th, as International Firefighters' Day throughout the City of Lenore. And this is something that is worldwide, so I'm gonna read the proclamation, and we'll, we'll let Chief Hare tell us a little about it. And whereas, International Firefighters' Day is observed each year on May 4th, to honor and remember past firefighters who have lost their lives while serving their communities, to express gratitude to those that have served in this line of work, and to show support and appreciation for those who presently serve. And whereas, regardless of the language of a firefighter speaks, or the country in which he or she works and resides, all firefighters fight against the same enemy, fire. And whereas, firefighters follow a long line of tradition and honor that inspires them to help colleagues, neighbors, and strangers alike. And whereas, the demands of firefighting are accomplished by both personal and physical tolls that all firefighters knowingly, knowingly accept while risking their lives to protect the lives of others. Now, therefore, be it resolved, as power invested in me as Mayor and on behalf of the Lenore City Council, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, May 4th, 2021, as International Firefighters' Day throughout the City of Lenore, and encourage all citizens to show support and appreciation to our city, our county, and state firefighters who protect our lives and property so diligently throughout the year, and by remembering past firefighters who dedicated their lives to preserve our safety. This is the fourth day of May 2021. Chief? Thank you very much, sir. We appreciate the service that you guys do every day.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council, for the proclamation. But thank you most of all for your support you show our department, our members continually. We appreciate it. International Firefighters' Day is in existence due to a fire that happened in 1998 in Australia that killed five firefighters fighting a wildfire. They come, a group come together and put this together, and they decided on May 4th, because May 4th also is Celebrates St. Florian's Day, and St. Florian is the first known Rome Battalion of a fire brigade in Rome, and he lost his life fighting his fire during his duties. But this is a day that is set aside to honor all those that have given the ultimate sacrifice in the line of duty with their lives. But we also take this day to show appreciation and thank all the ones that are still serving in the fire service. And I, myself, am very thankful for all international firefighters, and I'm more thankful for City of Lenore firefighters and in Caldwell County, that we have, and especially the volunteers. But this is what we, they put an emphasis on training and for fire prevention to prevent this going further. But let me tell you how blessed the City of Lenore is to have this group of men and women we have, that always put others before self in the line of duty to protect our citizens. So on behalf of our department, thank you so much for this. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Chief. I remember several years ago, we had a group.
Ireland?
I knew we'd had several that had, that had been here.
One, two, three. One, two, three. One, two, three.
I'll see, I'll see what he's present with. Okay. Okay, thank you all. It was a, it was a busy, busy time. A lot of, May, I guess, is a very, very busy month, and I guess since we're coming into spring, it's such a glorious time. I saw that, yeah. This was passed a note. I would like to remind you all that Thursday is National Day of Prayer here, not only across our nation. We will have a service on downtown on the square. That's May the 6th at 12 o'clock, so you're all invited to come to that. We will be, obviously, social distancing, doing the things that we're supposed to do, but several of our, our local ministers and others will be there for that on the square. So I'm sorry that we weren't able to do our breakfast annual that we've always do. We love that, but hopefully, next year, we will be back able to do that in 2022. So we look, look forward to that. Thank you, Reverend Perkins, Councilmember Perkins, for reminding that it's coming up. Okay, we'll move on with our agenda on this. We do not have matter scheduled for public hearings this evening, so we'll move to our consent agenda items, which consist of minutes from our City Council Meeting of Tuesday, April 19th, 2021. Item B are minutes, approval of the, that would be for the minutes of the committee, the whole meeting of Tuesday, April 27th, 2021. Item C is a parking lot lease extension. This is with the City of Lenore and with Thai Investments. This will be an extension of the lease agreement between the City of Lenore and Thai Investments LLC. We're properly located between South Main Street and Mulberry Street, which is owned by Thai Investments LLC. The lease will become effective June 1st, 2021, and will renew as a yearly lease unless either party terminates it on or before March 31st of each year. Item D is the proclamation for National Public Works Week. Item E is the proclamation for Motorcycle Safety and Awareness. Item F, proclamation for Peace Officers Memorial Week. Item F, proclamation for Peace Officer Memorial Week. Item G for proclamation for Celebrate Drinking Water Week. Item H is the International Firefighters' Proclamation. So that is your consent agenda. I will open it up if there's any discussion and/or question concerning that, and we'll entertain a motion at your convenience. Make a motion. Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the consent agenda items A through H.
Okay.
As presented.
Thank you, sir. We have a motion from Councilmember Stevens that we accept the consent agenda items A through H as presented. If there's no other questions, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And on the Zoom call.
Aye.
Thank you. And that carries unanimously. We do appreciate that. Lot of, lot of good things going on. All right, we'll move on to requests and petitions of any citizens. If there's anyone here, Kara? Thank you. You were with us. And anyone on the Zoom call that has any comments or questions for us? You can do that at this time. And hearing no one. We do not have reports of our boards and commissions. So we'll move on to the report and recommendations of the City Manager, Mr. Hilda Brand.
Mr. Mayor, Council, tonight, just a couple items for your information. The City-City Service Committee will meet, actually in person, on Monday, May 10th at noon at the Community College. The Caldwell County Economic Development Commission will meet. Right now, I think it's undecided. It's gonna be virtual, in-person, one or the other. But that'll be held on Tuesday, May 11th, 8:00 a.m., and that will be held at the Civic Center, if they have it in person. The ABC Board will meet virtually on Thursday, May 13th, at 2:00 p.m., and the Lenore Business Advisory Board will meet virtually on Thursday, May 13th, at 6:00 p.m. And that's all I have this evening.
Okay.
Unless there's questions.
Any questions, Mr. Hilda Brand? All these are, of course, normal monthly meetings that do go on. All right, no other questions from that. We'll move on to any report or recommendations of our City Attorney, Mr. Rohr.
No, sir.
Thank you. And I, as well, excuse me, do not have any recommendations or reports this evening on that. But I will ask any of our council members if they have any reports of anything going on that we hadn't thought about. Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
On the May the 23rd, the mobile unit, the Vaccination Mobile Unit, sponsored by the West Caldwell Health Council with Mr. Tom McCrery, will be at Mount Pilgrim at 1:00. We see that there's a great need in our community, in our city. Some people have not got it for one reason or another. So we want to make it convenient, available to as many people as we can. So the mobile unit will be vaccinating in and everybody at 1:00 on May the 23rd at Mount Pilgrim Baptist Church. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, sir. That's good news to hear. I know there's been talk about that maybe going other places as well. I think this is the first one. And we hope that it will be successful and reach out to members not only of the community but the surrounding community that maybe haven't had a chance to have the opportunity for a vaccination at this point in time. So that is good to hear. Anyone else on the council? Mr. Willis, anything from the legal municipalities that you've heard of or know of?
Nope. Just, we had a good city vision last week. Was that last week, wasn't it? Gosh.
Time moves on.
Yeah, it does. So, yeah, that was on my way out. So I'm not gonna be your inside man anymore.
There we go. Well, we'll figure, we'll figure out something. Yeah, that's right. The board has changed. So appreciate your service on that.
It was a blast. It was a blast.
Two terms, I know. And you've done a great job of keeping us posted to that. And I know that we will continue. Our closest, our representative in our district is Councilmember Doug Matheson from Blonrock. And many of us know Doug very well. So if we need anything, we will reach out to him to convey any of our messages to the league if we want to. But we know him so well, we can do that on our own. But it's good to have somebody that can be reporting to us on things like that. And the other thing, I guess, the Western Piedmont Council government's had their annual meeting also a week or so ago, and good reports were there from that. So things are moving along in all those. Be glad when we can go back to live meetings in the near future with all these things coming up. And I know there's a lot of things working toward that. Okay, is there anything else that needs to come before us tonight? If not, we stand adjourned.